Okay, I'd like approval for the closed session agenda. Or a motion, I'm sorry. I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. A motion is ordered for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board, whoops, yes, approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is six yes, two absent, Deutsch Satterwhite, motion passed.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order. Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code, Sections 2.2, 37, 11, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consider the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees, appointees, or officers of the Prince William County School Board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11A, 1, and 8. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11A, 2, and 8. To discuss and take action on student disciplinary matters relating to expulsions of specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11, 2, and 8. Four, to consult with division counsel regarding specific contractual matter requiring legal advice under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11A, 8. Five, to consult with legal counsel and staff on specific legal matter involving the school board's effort to address school overcrowding and land acquisition which requires the advice of counsel under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11A, 3, and 8. And finally, six, to consult with division counsel and receive legal advice regarding actual and probable litigation where such consultation and briefing in open session will adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 11A, 7.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent, Deutsch Satterwhite, motion passed.
Excellent. The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session approximately in one hour. Returning to open session from closed session, we have...
My computer's not working.
Okay, well, we'll just hit F5.
I did F5, I hit F5.
It's not working, oh, it's not working.
B, we need some help with Ms. Jessie's computer, the F5 is not refreshing. Okay, great. Okay, we're going to, the Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session. We do have a closed session action item. A motion is in order for that action item. Mr. Wilk.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the revised impact statement recommended by the staff for submission to the county in response to rezoning applications and proffer amendments.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote. This is on 6.01.
Come on, come on, come on.
Three card lolly.
That's about what it is.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Yes, people can't watch.
Okay, moving on to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second, Ms. Jessie?
I second.
Please vote. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay, moving on to the closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-37, 12, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting on March 20, 2019 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be a resolve that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second, Ms. Williams?
Second.
Ms. Williams, any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
This school year, we are kicking off the business of our meetings with a response to community requests to hear more about the good things that our school students and staff members are accomplishing. We are working with the schools and our communications team to spotlight a few of the good news items at these meetings and elsewhere with the term positively PWCS. Tonight's presentation will be introduced by our superintendent, Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Wilk and members of the board. We have some great news tonight regarding our students' performance on advanced exams. And Dr. Jennifer Casada, Director of Accountability, is here this evening to share more detailed information. Dr. Casada.
All right, good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. It gives me great joy to be able to share with you some positively PWCS news this evening. Each year, the College Board releases data about the percent of graduates who leave high school having demonstrated college-level achievement on at least one advanced placement exam. They report data at the national and state level. VDOE released the information for Virginia in February and showing that Virginia as a state once again was in the top 10 in this area with nearly 29% of students earning at least one qualifying score, which is above the average, the national average of 23.5%. Now for the good news. Oh, wait. Okay, so the good news, as this chart shows, is that not only did PWCS exceed the Virginia average, PWCS exceeded the average of the highest performing state, which is Massachusetts. We had over 34% of our graduates earning qualifying scores. It's important to remind everyone that we have schools that offer different types of college-level exams. We include the International Baccalaureate and Cambridge ACE exams in our calculation since we have schools that predominantly offer those exam choices. Also, though, I wanted to mention if we only included our schools that are only AP schools in the calculation, we still exceed Massachusetts, which is again the highest performing state. This has long been a strength for Prince William County because it's a focus of the school board and the superintendent and school division to provide all students with access to these exams by paying the fees for students. Also, we expose all students to the PSAT and use the results from those to help encourage students to take advanced coursework. This growth has been exciting over time. For example, in 2018, nearly 500 more graduates earned a qualifying score than in 2012. In addition, we have other ways that we provide college-level experience to students. In the past few years, our dual enrollment course offerings have expanded and the number of students earning dual enrollment credit has greatly increased also. Thank you for the opportunity to share the good news. Have a great evening.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Dr. Casada.
I just, Dr. Casada, I just... I just want to congratulate you and congratulate Prince William County.
Any others? Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you too, because in my district, you know, I've been hearing such horrible things, you know, like we're not meeting the goals. This says that Prince William County schools are the best. Thank you.
Good news.
That is good news.
Thank you. Any other comments? Wonderful. Okay. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We are going to, we're going to move, right? We're going to start with a moment of silence at the request of Ms. Diane Ralston of the Neapsco District. Okay, thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any students in the audience? Anyone like to come forward and do the pledge? We do have some scouts, yes. Let's go. Here we go. You guys, would you go ahead and approach the podium and introduce yourselves and where you go to school? Go ahead.
I'm Jacob and I go to Colgan.
Let's start with the introductions.
My name is Jacob Bogdan, I go to Colgan High School.
Thank you.
I'm Patrick Erickson, I go to Colgan High School.
Awesome. Okay, guys, go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in thy name, shall we be etched for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Sorry about that. The next will be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended, consent agenda as recommended, excuse me.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Or, I mean, please vote.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
I'm sorry, can y'all please revote? The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Okay. At this point, during this time of the agenda, the student representative and alternates will speak to have an opportunity to introduce themselves and share their interests. Tonight, our student representative, Sasan Faraj, of Patriot High School. Thank you, sir.
Hey, everyone. Hope everyone's having a great night. I know students are still adjusting that the time change and waking up in the dark is still and always strenuous, so I hope everyone else is doing okay with that. In the past few weeks, I had the pleasure of visiting Brentsville Student Government Association. To actually piggyback off of what I said during the last board meeting, the students spent some time focusing on the transition of the grading policy, both as a whole and the disparities within each individual class. The student leaders recommended that schools even out the different grading policies between each class and also start to even out the disparities between formative and summative grades in order to focus onto the lead-up of an assessment, not just the assessment alone. The student leaders from Brentsville SGA also believe that the county can emphasize the effort of promoting a conservation movement or being green around the schools. The students pointed out towards food waste during lunch and their own efforts to mitigate the impacts of uneaten lunch by setting up different containers for specified waste, i.e. trash, recyclables, and food waste, but they suggested that steps such as these, but not limited to these steps, be more emphasized throughout the county in order for the county to be less wasteful, more mindful overall. Lastly, the students shared the observation that the staff were not representative of some of the minority populations within the school, and that might make some students feel more isolated within those schools. I just want to note that this observation was also brought up at Garfield High School during my last visit. Students believe that a lack of diversity among the teaching staff sometimes leads students unable to form a more positive relationship with their teachers, which may be needed for a success in that class. Being understood not just as a student but as a person can go a long way in making a student feel more comfortable in their learning environment. That being said, the student leaders at Brentsville appreciate the small class sizes within their school. They said that it helps build personal connections with many students throughout the school. This form of connections could also help mitigate some of the impacts brought up before because teachers are able to spend more one-on-one time with each individual student. The next main event from the past few weeks was the meeting between all the SCA presidents. During this meeting, the SCA presidents invited teachers within their own special education departments so they can help what will now be named as the One-for-All Ball. For those that do not know, the SCA presidents are, within the county, are working hard to create an additional prom for students within the special education department and students within each school's buddies outreach program throughout the county. I want to thank the teachers for their recommendations and suggestions. Parents of attending students are welcome to stay at the event, and registration forms for the event will be distributed to the participating schools next week, and more personalized information with details about the dance will be on those forms as the dance dances on an invite basis to help stay within max capacity limit and to sure as many students can attend as possible. To finish off on another high point, I want to bring attention to all the marketing students from Battlefield and Garfield High School recently, who recently attended the state conference for the Distributive Education Clubs of America, DECA. Although there are so many students who should get personal mention, there are far too many based on performance. Nineteen students made it to the International Career Development Conference in Orlando this April. To add on to the good news, seniors Christina Veha, Wendy Zhou earned gold recertification for Garfield School-Based Enterprise. Before the next board meeting, I have a meeting with Patriots SCA on April 2, and then I'll have my next, my second meeting with Woodbridge's SCA on April 10. The SCA presidents plan to have their next meeting on April 3. I hope each high school can attend. So far, so good. And as always, students can email me at my Prince William County Schools given email. I'll spell it out, F-A-R-A-J-S-A-19@PWCS.edu.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Sasan. Next, we'll be, moving on to the citizen comments on the agenda, non-agenda items. It looks like we have four in total signed up. Everyone that signed up will have a chance to speak, and I will call their names up if they can please come into the front. Cindy Zeller, Lisa Zaragapour, Richard Jesse, Kenny Bodie. You will have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Cindy Zeller.
Hello, Dr. Watson School Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here in front of you today. My name is Cindy Zeller. My address is on record. I email the clerk. My kids have gone to the Prince William County Schools for the past six years. I'm very happy with the schools, teachers, and the administration. I volunteer at the schools. I help the PTO, and I've offered to organize fundraisers, including the fundraiser that I'm here to speak to you about today, the Booster-Thon. If you Google the Booster-Thon when you go home today, you'll see that they are, they do fundraisers across the country, and people either love them or hate them. Lots of schools that started doing them years ago have now stopped doing them because they have increased their soliciting practices in the school. I believe in fundraisers. I want to help our schools earn extra money that they deserve. I don't have a problem with the Booster-Thon. I have a problem with the way it's implemented in my school and many other schools in Prince William County. I've been bringing my concerns to my school and to the Associate Superintendent since 2015. When I first found out that they were not on the approved vendor list for the schools, they were quickly added to the approved vendor list. The Booster-Thon Company and the fundraiser violates multiple Prince William County regulations, and I'm seeking your help to enforce the regulations because it's in the best interest of our children. The Booster-Thon Company told me that they will implement the fundraiser in the schools in the way that the PTO organizer, president, the principal, and the associate superintendent tell them to do so. They also say that if they pull back how much they are in the schools, the school will most likely not make as much money. Therefore, we're leaving the decision-making up to the schools, which is a conflict of interest. How can we ask the schools to make the decisions on how it's implemented when it affects the money that they in fact raise? I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the Booster-Thon, the way that, I'm sure that all of you have heard rave reviews about how much money it brings to the schools. I've heard in schools in the Prince William County in the western area, including our school, each year since 2015 has raised anywhere from $17,000 to $50,000 for the schools. The fundraiser takes away instructional time from the encore. Every day for eight days, it takes away encore time. The first day, there's a pep rally that takes away about an hour of time, and then it does huddles, where it calls out each student by name and asks them to stand up and applauds them if they've received solicited fundraisers in the last 24 hours. They call them by name and then ask the other students to applaud them. Just like we wouldn't do that with grades with As and Bs and applauding each students and shaming the ones that are still sitting down, we shouldn't be applauding the ones whose parents can participate in the fundraiser.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next, Lisa Zaragapour.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Zaragapour. My address is on file with the clerk. Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, Dr. Walts, everyone in the room. Equity in education means closing achievement gaps, increasing student engagement, and preparing our students for life beyond school. We create lifelong learners. We bring more understanding and compassion about each other, and we build a better society. I believe this to my core, to the core of my being. So, all Prince William County schools have embarked on cultural competency training led by care leads at each school. This year, their professional training includes implicit bias, micro-messaging, and stereotype threats that sabotage equity. Prince William staff are moving toward action, which is much better than just understanding that there could be a problem. We are trying to actually find things that work and fix things. So, this work is vital and ongoing in all learning communities and will create socially conscious teachers who will empower and develop all students to be globally minded. Last Saturday at Dar al-Nur, we offered a day-long Islamic symposium to Prince William County staff. As we shared conversations about our experiences, we realized that this is a human struggle and that building relationships, honoring the humanity in each other, all have, and having these meaningful conversations are at the root of making a difference for all of our students and our communities. On behalf of Dar al-Nur, we want to thank the Prince William County School staff who attended our symposium and extend our gratitude to Maria Burgos for providing outstanding professional development opportunities in Prince William County. And we look forward next year to offering more symposiums again. We will invite everyone to come, of course, and we want to also serve as a resource for the greater Prince William County community at any time. On May 4, there is another mosque on Holy Road. They're the Ahmadi community, and they will be offering a symposium as well, and Maria believes, says that the information will be made available to Prince William County staff on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jessie.
Evening, my name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. I'm going to break my trend and be positive this time. Dr. Walts, I want to congratulate you on doing the budget this year that I think almost everybody is thrilled about, and it's very much appreciated. One thing I would like to encourage the board to do is give yourself a raise. You can only raise your salary once every four years, and Mr. Trenton, I know you proposed and saw your hand up in the paper smiling, and you're leaving the board, of course, but, yeah, and I believe the last time that the board had opportunity to give itself a raise, you encouraged them not to also. So, what that does, when you, at $1,000 a month, it makes it almost, you have to be middle-class to be on this board. And this board should be open to people who are not only, you know, middle-class, but others have the opportunity, and you're making it when you have such a low salary. The school system, I believe, has more vehicles, more buildings, more employees than the county does. The Board of County Supervisors, I believe, makes around $45,000 a year. They have staff, and I don't know why you guys don't deserve a raise. I also looked up on the thing here, and I see that the calendar is on the schedule. I don't know why you don't put in, because you know you need a notice to the public, why don't you put in some snow days for missing board meetings and things, so that if you miss a board meeting, you already have it on the schedule, it's already announced that this is a snow day to replace some of the board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenny Bodie.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, board members, Dr. Walts, fellow citizens. My name is Kenny Bodie, and I reside in the Okaquan District. I'm also candidate running for the Prince William County Board of Supervisors in the Okaquan District. I'm also going to break from tradition tonight. I originally was just going to talk very generally about the budget, but if you guys notice, I'm wearing my pen from my graduating class at Georgetown. As many of you know, Georgetown was recently in the news for some not-good reasons. A group of parents decided to scam the school and scam out very few other students through money, through endowments, through other things. The reason why I bring that up is, unlike some of those students, I got into Georgetown under my own merit. Now, I'm still paying for that choice, literally. Only about five more payments left, but I'm about 10 years out, but I say that because myself and all my friends, we got in there under our own merits. We worked hard, but I know that I got lucky. I know that a lot of families, including many of the ones that live here in Prince William County, will frankly not be given a chance, get an equitable chance at an education unless you guys continue the hard work that you're doing, such as what's in this budget this year. I came from a very low-income family, and I knew from the very get-go that I was behind. I didn't have money for tutors. I didn't have money for pre-K. I didn't have money to even get, you know, some of the extracurricular things that other kids had. It's only because I got lucky and I was blessed with parents that had the time to sit down with me, and I was blessed with enough intellect to be able to learn things as I went along that I'd be able to do that. But I know, again, that a lot of kids don't have that. So, looking at things like teacher pay, making sure that teachers are having the right things given to them, that's key. Looking at councils, looking at pre-K education, looking at all the things that you guys address as priorities in this budget will go a long way to making sure that you just don't have to be lucky to make it anymore in this county. Now, I will use the last of my minute to scold the current sitting board because they recently, as of last night, approved another residential development. 325 more residential units. They'll feed directly into Mrs. Jessie and Mrs. Williams's districts. It frankly floors me that we continue to approve these types of developments when we know that they produce more children for the school system, and the proffering just doesn't go nearly long enough to make up for that. Now, the developer did offer some proffers, but a couple million dollars is a drop in the bucket, let's face it. It's just going to add to trailers, which you guys have been working tirelessly to reduce, and tirelessly to reduce class sizes. So, I hope as we continue on these conversations about budgets and priorities, you guys continue to hold fast to your priorities, which is the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to 1601. Next, we'll move to 1601 modification of the 2019-20 approved school calendar.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm a firm believer in no is the question, is the answer to every question you never ask. So, I was unaware that we had to register before this meeting, but I, I mean, not all, everyone used their time, so if I could have two minutes.
Do they have your name? What is your name and your address?
My name is Makia Little. My address is 4829 Montega Drive, Woodbridge, Virginia 22192.
Okay.
I have three children in Prince William County schools.
Start the clock.
Thank you.
Three.
I was helping my daughter study last night for the Virginia Standards of Learning exam, so I recognize that's above your concern, your level of authority. But I didn't know who to raise my concern to because usually I cook, and my husband assists my children with their homework. But I was feeling a little under the weather, so we reversed roles last night. And I saw that what they were teaching my child was that the the status of early Africans was unknown, and that they were probably slaves or servants. As a HBCU graduate, who knows better? Although I lived in Prince William County, I attended Thomas Jefferson High School, so I was not a product of Prince William County schools. But it's one thing to say, "We're not going to cover that." It's another thing to lie to my child and say that their history is unknown and that they were probably servants or slaves before they came to America. And I feel like part of this miseducation is a reason for our current country's climate. And the fact that if my child gives an answer other than what's on that paper, that she's considered wrong. So, how do I educate my child and teach her that her history is powerful? That her history is amazing? And what her classmates are learning or what they carry with them when they become senior leaders, executives, and feel that it's beneath them to promote someone above them because their ancestors were just slaves or servants? Right now, I'm working in the CIA as the chief of a group within the Diversity and Inclusion Office, and I'm fighting these battles every day to change minds, to change hearts, to change unconscious bias. Because they're not unconscious, they're taught at this age to our children and their classmates. And I don't know what can be done about that, but I figured I'd start with you all because I have three babies, nine, 10, and 11, in Prince William County schools who are being shaped for their future. Thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, next, we'll move to 1601 for the approved school calendar. Ms. Goss? Ms. Casada?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, Dr. Casada will be presenting the modification to the 2019-2000 calendar given the new legislation passed by the Virginia Assembly requiring school divisions that open prior to Labor Day to be closed on the Friday before Labor Day. At this time, I invite Dr. Casada to the podium to share about those changes.
Good evening again, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. As Mrs. Goss said, I'm here to share with you a modification we're proposing to the approved calendar based on recent legislative activity. As you may recall, the school board approved the calendar for 2019-20 on October 17th. In that calendar, school starts on August 26th, which is exactly one week before Labor Day and ends on June 12th. This calendar does include a two-week break for winter break. PWCS has been starting before Labor Day for the past few years as a result of a waiver we've received from VDOE due to weather-related closings. During this legislative session, the Virginia General Assembly passed legislation that removes the prohibition on school divisions starting before Labor Day without a waiver. School divisions statewide can now start up to two weeks before Labor Day. The new requirement or catch is that schools must be closed on the Friday before Labor Day to make that weekend a four-day weekend. The PWCS proposal to meet this new requirement is to change that Friday, August 30th, to a holiday with schools and offices closed. Since the original approved calendar had 181 days, this day can be removed without changing the starting or ending date of the school year since we would still start the school year with the required 180 days. Changes like these are one reason why we always advocate to approve a calendar with at least 181 days. And as a result, that two-week winter break will still be maintained. Future calendars, 2020 and 2021 and beyond, will build in this required holiday from the outset. The governor is scheduled to sign this legislation into law by March 26th, and as such, the school board can take action on this change at your April 3 meeting. Once approved, the new calendar would be posted on the website, and the change will be publicized by communications on the web and through various social media outlets. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Trentum? He's got a list of them.
No, just one of them. I'm making questions for Lainey.
Oh, great. Can't wait.
So, no, for, just one, the only question I have is we've got a certain number of minutes that are built into the calendar. And that's what we tap into when we have snow days, and that's how we've been able to take all these snow days and still not have to make up anything else. What does this one day of, out of the calendar, do to our bank of minutes that we need to work with?
So, that's a great question, Mr. Trentum. And so, this year, we began the year with approximately 19 days' worth of those hours, and so, we would start with approximately 18 days' worth of those hours. So, remember the change to recess counting and instructional time? That's why that number grew from last year to this year, and it would just go down by one.
Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Dr. Casada, I just want to say this is wonderful news. We have all lobbied, the school board has lobbied, and for many years, several school boards have lobbied to change the Labor Day laws. And it's exciting that it's finally happened. And, you know, giving up the one day on our calendar, I think, is totally worth it because now it's no longer a fight, and we don't have to count snow days anymore and the crazy formula they gave us. I'm excited about this. So, thank you for bringing the good news today.
Okay, thanks. Next, we'll move to 1701, the year-end spending approval.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. Before you have for action, year-end spending, about $9.7 million. Thank you.
Excellent. It's one slide. I like that. That's great. Keep it up. Any questions for Mr. Wallingford on his one slide? Oh, Mr. Trentum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Wallingford. If you wouldn't mind, it's only one slide. But if you could go down there and just go through and kind of just do a quick summary of the individual line items as far as what they are. For instance, I'll start off, like, the first line item is FY 2019 Additional Funding for Technology Improvements Plan. It's just a million dollars. Do we know what that, how that million dollars is targeted? Or is it, is it just, oh, we're going to put another million dollars against it? So, for the first one, it's 2019 Additional Funding for Technology Improvements Plan. It's a million dollars. This is for 19. What's that million dollars going to be used for? Is it targeted for something specific? Or is it just another million dollars to kind of throw at the TIP?
I wouldn't say it's thrown at the TIP. This is part of our continuing upgrade effort. As you know, many of our schools are, computers are as old as a decade or more. So, this is part of our continuing effort to do the refresh process through our schools, and it will be targeted through our normal process that we do with the schools in order to make those refresh. And, you know, we're behind on that, so this continues to help us catch up on that process.
So, this is primarily for refresh for the?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a question. On the Desmos Graphing Calculator piece that we talked about, we talked about this at one of the work sessions. We've got like 1.7 million tagged for that. What, how's that funding, I guess, what's costing the 1.7 million dollars? Is that hardware or?
Correct. So, that's being, that's actually being overseen by our math department, and that's going to be targeted for various devices, targeted for math classes in order for them to have more devices for students to be able to use in those math classes. Because as you know, now the state will be requiring the use of this online calculator, and this will give math teachers access to the technology so they can have it in their classrooms throughout the year.
So, this is Kindles or tablets or whatever?
Correct. It's a mixture of things. It's the math department. I don't know if Ms. Goss has stepped out, but.
I'll be happy to speak to it. So, yes, in answer to your question, it's not only that, though, but also as part of the whole refresh thing, we have devices out there. We can't keep up with the numbers of devices and the amount of money we've been spending on that refresh program. So, part of it is getting many, many more of the devices and also some that we already have in existence up to where we can download that graphing calculator. All of our students are going to be tested using that. And thankfully, that was pushed off one more year because we have a lot of students that just don't have access to that kind of technology, and we want to make absolutely, positively sure that all of our kids have access and are able to practice with that for the entire year going into that next test.
Okay. All right. Thank you. For the credit card implementation, the project manager and the program implementation costs, no, these are two separate line items. If I recall, isn't the project manager, wasn't that funded as part of the 2020, as a budget position in the 2020 budget?
There are actually two positions that you're referring to. One is a grade 13 that will be in my office, in the Office of Financial Services. There's also a project manager that'll be added as a temporary position for a year, two-year and a half in the Office of Information Technology because they're actually going through implementation of four different software packages at the same time. So, it's going to be very busy for those folks.
Right. So, is this $128,000, is that for the temporary person? Or this temporary position that you're talking about?
$128,000, that's part of the year-end spend, is for the temporary employee. That's correct.
Okay. The last question I have, actually, yeah, I'll make the last question I have. As far as, there's a technology, and this is just a clarification. It's a technology replacement for interactive whiteboards. We've got 1.7 million dollars. This is for, I'm assuming this is for schools. Is this like part of a 50-50 split type of thing? Or is this, we're just funding straight whiteboards for schools? And do we know how many of them that gets us and where they're going?
I don't have the exact number in front of me. It is a straight replacement for those schools.
Okay. Could we just get that?
I can get you the number, sure.
Yeah, in our Friday packet or something?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. A motion is in order on 1701.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the FY 2019 year-end spending per the attachment.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jesse?
I have a second.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion, questions? Mr. Deutsch?
Question for Mr. Wallingford, since he has the awesome tie-on today. Can you just walk, can you just walk the public through where all this money comes from? Sure. We passed the budget, and then we've got almost $10 million extra.
So, we talked about this at the work session and markup the other night. What's happened is we haven't actually increased the budget that much. Here's what happened. As a result of sliding back the sale on our net, next debt issuance about five months, that actually, we make two payments per year. Those payments, one of those payments slides off the end of the fiscal year. So, in the debt service fund, we're actually going to save about 5.3 or 5.4 million dollars. That money's freed up in the current fiscal year. It's money that flows back into the general fund that we can use for a variety of other things that you saw added both last night at the prior markup. That money that goes back to the general fund isn't actually $10 million. It's more in the range of about $3.5 to $4 million to the general fund. It's a total reduction to the debt service fund of about $5.5, $5.5 million.
And then where does the differential between the $10 million and that number you just cited?
I'm not sure what $10 million you're referring to, Mr. Deutsch.
The total for year-end spending says 9.7 million?
I understand now. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. The year-end spend of $10 million is fully a function of two things. It's savings that we've generated in the fiscal '19 budget based on the forecast that staff do. It's also a function of, in addition to that forecast, we have money as a result of the fiscal '18 audit, true-up. So, the auditors finished their audit. If we've budgeted some amount of revenue on the county side, and we exceed that revenue, they actually split it 57-43. So, at the end of fiscal '18, the county found themselves in the position where they had about $10 million more. About 5 point, I think the number is 5.6 or 5.7 million dollars actually flows into Prince William County schools. That resolution was actually approved by the board just last week.
And then?
One last thought, if I could. As part of the forecast that we do both monthly and quarterly, those numbers, we start forecasting what we think that number might be at the beginning of the year. So, the 5.7 isn't a surprise. We've had about $5 to $5.5 million every year for the past three or four years.
Sure. Yeah, it's just a nice chunk here.
It is, yes, sir.
And then, how do we determine where we're going to spend that money, the year-end money?
The $10 million?
Yeah.
That's suggestions that come from a variety of places, either through the critical unmet needs or through suggestions from senior staff. And we put it forward to you for your approval.
Ms. Jesse?
On the whiteboards, you said replacements. Are you going to look at schools that maybe don't have whiteboards or?
I'm sure we will. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At the high school level, I'd like to chat with you about it, maybe later. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Next, we're going to move 17.02, the fiscal year 2020 budget CIP approval. This is on for action. Do I have a motion? Mr. Wilk?
Mr. Chairman, a motion that the Prince William County School Board want approve FY 2020 CIP and FY 2020 school budget to the total amount of 1.5 billion and further approve the revenue-sharing agreement between the Prince William County Board of County Supervisors and the Prince William County School Board that provides 57.23 of the general county revenues be transferred to the school division for the operations of FY 2020. And further, three, direct the superintendent to forward the requested school budget by fund totals to the Prince William County Board of Supervisors. And further, four, request the Prince William County Board of County Supervisors to approve and appropriate the FY 2020 school budget by lump sum appropriation of the amount of 1.5 billion plus by fund totals as in previous years.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Mr. Deutsch?
Can I just ask a couple of questions, staff, for starters?
I'm sorry. Say it. Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry. Can I just ask a couple of questions of staff, for starters?
Sure.
All right. It's your time, eh? Just a, maybe just a detailed question, but could we get on this item on board docs? Can we get the budget and the CIP added just so people can see everything that we're voting on together right here?
Are you referring to the budget book?
I think we've got a link to the, yeah, to the line item budget that we have.
Absolutely. We can absolutely have that added there.
And then, just so, I know we talked about this in the work session, but there's been a topic of conversation publicly. But there's a plan floating around for the total elimination of trailers that both us and the county have talked about, worked together on, et cetera. Can you just tell us and the public what the status of that plan is in terms of this vote, both in terms of whether it's incorporated and what if any of it is funded? Just want to have it out there for the public as we take this vote.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Deutsch. The plan that you referred to is about 100 and The plan that you referred to is about 174 million dollars in extra spending over the CIP. That would add two elementary schools, a middle school and some additional space. That is an effort to reduce, if not eliminate, all trailers. Currently, one of the questions that you pose, who is going to fund that 174 million dollars? That's a conversation that still has to be had.
But we, do we have, we have that plan that adds up to 170 million. Is that spelled out in our budget and we're essentially waiting to figure out the funding mechanisms?
That plan is actually part of the CIP. It's a separate item in the CIP document when it's finalized and released. That 174, again, that 174 million dollars doesn't impact fiscal 20, I believe fiscal 21 either from a debt perspective. So again, that's still, who's going to pay for it fully or whether it's going to be partly shared is still a conversation that will take.
So it would be fair to say that we've incorporated draft of the plan, but we have to continue figuring out with the county how that would be paid for if it were to happen.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you knew I wasn't going to let the opportunity go by. So some of this is going to be a repeat of what I said at the last work session, but um, so just off the bat until I am going to vote for this budget. So I, and what I said last Wednesday night is this, of all the years I've been on the school board, this has been one of the most frustrating for me. Even though we have lots of money, part of my consternation is whenever, whenever a government organization gets a big slug of extra money, we're real good at spending it. We're not so good when the things tighten down as far as trying to draw back. So I just get nervous when we give government organizations big slugs of money. That said, I'm going to vote for it because I think this budget does do a number of very significant things. It does provide a step increase and a 2% pay adjustment for our staff, which was important to a lot of people. And we can afford to do that, so I'm glad to support that. It fully funds the recommendations from the special education audit. I think that's important, I think that's a good thing. It funds additional counseling positions where we had, where we were really shorted on. So I think that's a good thing. It funds a number of recommendations from the infrastructure task force that was designed to kind of help mitigate some of the differences that we have between our older schools and our newer schools. And there are a number of other things in the budget that are worthwhile. So I think those are all positives. But there are some concerns I have, and one of the reasons why I'm doing this now is to lay this down for discussion for the future and future budgets, even though I may not be here. I'll always be here. Since it's already been raised, the school board raises, I think there were, I think it was too big of a step. I get that the board member, that the school board hasn't had a raise in 19 years. But I think 117% all in one shot is a little bit big. I know none of us have actually been here for those 19 years, so it's not that. But that be what it is, that's just to get that out of the way. The bigger concerns I have is when we had this, when we had this much money, there's a couple of opportunities I think we may have missed. The first has to do with the staff raises and our steps and what have you. Number one, our pay scale has 32 steps. That's a lot of steps. We've had a number of discussions about how a step's not guaranteed every year, depending on the fiscal, the fiscal environment and how much money there's actually at. We can't always hit a step, and I get that. So even, and I acknowledge that our highest step is the highest in the area. I think most people probably won't get there is part of the challenge with that. See, we talk about with a step and a step and a two percent COLA. We talk a lot about steps and what does a step average is 2.8%, which it does, but let's break that down a little bit more. For every grade 13 and above, a step is a 3% increase. For every grade 11 and below, a step's a 2.9% increase. And then for the teachers, it's kind of a mix, except our probationary teachers, they get like a 1.6. So they kind of draw that average down. So that, so the scales built in so that the pay deltas keep seem to increasing. Then the 2% cost of living adjustment does that as well. If you look at the total numbers, and people may not like me saying this, but if you look at the total numbers, this year's pay increase with a step and a step and a 2% COLA turns out to be about 10 or 11,000 dollars for an associate superintendent. For a teacher at step eight, it's about a quarter of that, about 2,500 dollars. And I didn't even do the numbers for like a bus driver's or cafeteria workers, I didn't want to get depressed. Although a friend of mine who's married to one of our cafeteria hostesses said that that equates out to about 45 cents an hour for her. So I guess at the end of the week, she can go buy Chick-fil-A and get another sandwich. But, so I think this is an opportunity to do something with those steps, to do something with their scale and kind of plus up those lower, those lower grades, which I'm afraid we may have missed that. The other thing is, which we talked, which we talked about is the, we've talked a lot about the central office staffing study. This budget adds approximately 50, 50 central office positions to the budget, which is not bad in its own right. The last work session, I suggested maybe we take some, I suggested a quarter, a quarter of those new positions and maybe make them teaching positions to kind of help keep moving forward on the class size reduction pieces. I heard a lot of people actually laughing at me in the audience of that, which I guess you can go ahead and laugh, it really doesn't bother me. But I do want to raise a couple of points of that. One point of that is, over the years, I have heard, I can't tell you the number of times I've heard when we get in brief on budget, talking about how, well, we are so much understaffed than the rest of all our divisions around us on a per student basis. Well, we added some staff last year, we've added about 50 this year at central office positions. So that we've, we've gone a long way to narrowing that gap. So for future budgets, that, that line doesn't hold water anymore. So just going forward. And the other thing is I really, it just kind of bothered me, we had like 50 million dollars extra in this budget and we really didn't make any progress. We held, we held, we held ground on class size reductions, but we didn't really make any progress on that. And we didn't really even try to make too much progress on it. So that frustrated me because I think we missed an opportunity there as well. And I would have liked to have spread out those additional positions more. So that said, that's, that's my concerns. I would encourage this board in the future to take, to consider those words and maybe look at some addressing some of those other things. But like I said, because of the positives identified at the beginning, I am going to vote for the budget.
Ms. Jessie was next.
I've been on this board for over five years now. And I must say this is the most comprehensive and collaborative budget I've seen from the superintendent and his staff. And I want to congratulate you because I think you've looked at various elements that need to be funded. The teachers, of course, because I think I've worked with teachers and they are just hard workers. And we really, they deserve the pay increase. The substitute pay, I don't know if that's ever been addressed. My daughter Jennifer subs and she's, she wanted to say thank you, Dr. Walz, for the substitute pay increase. The school board, I think it's, I think we do look at school boards through the lens of being middle-class individuals who really maybe see this as a public service and can afford it. But I do think that we deserve, the school board pay increases important. Special ed, of course, and mental health with all the things that are going on. Instructional coaches, when I was a principal, one of the things that I always tried to do was help people get promoted to principals and/or to move into administrative positions. And they would say to me, I had several say, Ms. Jessie, I don't want to be an administrator. I just want to be a good teacher. So I think having instructional coaches allows an opportunity for our teachers to move to a higher grade and do things that they really enjoy. Pre-K, I don't think we can ever lose when we do pre-K. I'm on the Head Start Committee and I think that's important. For the Okaquan district, I'm very appreciative of everything that this, your school system has done for the district, including the John Jenkins School, the Okaquan School, moving that up really means a lot because we were looking at the overcrowding in that school. And so somebody listened and they went back and relooked at Okaquan, and I really appreciate that. Physical education, the fact that people came in here at the last minute and that the superintendent really listened to what they had to say. So all in all, I just want to say that it feels good. And I know Mr. Trenum, we expect Mr. Trenum to find things. And actually, you really help us stop and think about some of the things that we take for granted. But I just want to congratulate the superintendent and his staff for putting together a very comprehensive and collaborative budget. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points, some of the stuff has been reiterated and said. First of all, I will be supporting the budget. Like Mr. Trenum and others, I expressed some of the concerns I had at the work session. I want to give a perspective from a special needs parent, the benefits of what this budget does for special education in Prince William County schools, thanks to the audit that we did and having the full funding to follow through with that. So just in summary, an increased focus on instructional best practices for students with disabilities, additional materials to support instructional needs in families with disabilities, such as we've already heard from teachers about the benefits of equals math and TeachTown basics. I want, I went to Montclair Elementary and I watched the kids play with this new device and application that they had in the autism classroom. Newly developed parent training for the Parent Resource Center. I know we're expanding that. I will just say, you know, I think it's important for working class families to have training opportunities after working hours if possible, that it's not just all midday and such, because not all families and people have the ability to take off work, to learn new devices, new programs, new offerings. Additional resources for dyslexia and self-advocacy for parents and staff. I think this is a definite benefit. I have met a number of families with, students with dyslexia. And I think we need to continue doing our advocacy and supporting these families with the tools and resources that they need. The courses funds critically needed positions, school psychologists helping with assistive technology, supervisor coordinator positions as recommended in the audit that we're moving forward with. An increased focus on inclusive practices with students with disabilities. Increased professional learning opportunities, something I hear over and over again that a lot of our special needs teachers and educators would like to be able to collaborate more with others and their peers and see what are they doing in their classrooms with their students. And then finally, strengthening of parent and staff relationships through the increased partnership, more continuous feedback loops through parents, community members and staff members. So from a special ed standpoint, I think we are heading in the right direction. And this budget does fund what the recommendations were of the audit. From the Potomac District standpoint, Washington Reed was a major win a year ago. We had a lot of grant and funding for that, that obviously elapsed. So this budget fully sustains the pre-K program that expanded there across the street from Patty Elementary with the addition of those 10 classrooms. That's very important, like Ms. Jessie said, for bringing as many students as possible, not just families with means, but all students, identifying them early to get them in for the support that they need for that early intervention, very important stuff there. Of course, Forest Park did get the turf football field. Then we sustained a military liaison officer for a very large segment of military families in the Potomac District. And then of course, last but not least, one of the highest, the highest teacher raise in over 10-plus years. Last year, obviously, you know, we had the step, I voted with the COLA. This year, of course, we were able to maintain that and give a strong raise with thanks to support from our leaders in Richmond to have that funding in the education budget. You know, when it comes to the, bless you, when it comes to the raise, I've been quoting, I've said before, I do believe it should have been a little bit more incremental. I do believe a raise is overdue after 19 years. But, you know, we had our vote, we had our discussion about that. But that is why I voted to lower the raise with Mr. Trenum at the work session. And then looking at a high-level view, one of the views and my beliefs on that is I still, when I came on this board and Mr. Klein so graciously helped do a study for, about backpaying frozen steps during the recession, when to Dr. Walz's credit and his team, we did not lay off staff. But we did not give steps during some of those years of the recession. The millions of dollars that would go into doing that, of course, that has always been the topic and being able to pay back some of those steps that we missed. So again, just something that possibly, you know, we could have looked at or something to look at in the future, backpaying some of the steps that were missed in those years with the recession. But finally, as I do every year, I do have to read my statement, Declaration of Personal Interest on matter affecting close relative as school board member pursuant to Prince William County Policy 114 Regulation 114-1 Conflict of Interest and Virginia's Local State Conflict of Interest Act in conjunction with the school board's vote on FY 20 budget. I am confirming in open session that the school board, the superintendent, his staff and I, by virtue of this declaration, the public have been informed of the fact that my wife is an employee of the school board and was so employed prior to my election of the school board. I confirm that this relationship will not prevent me from voting on this matter or any other matter impacting our teachers impartially, fairly, objectively and solely in the public interest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am also supporting this budget. I would like to very much thank the superintendent and his staff for truly listening, not only to each member of this board, but also to the community and really everyone who has a hand in making this, the system run. It is absolutely amazing that you were able to work with all of us in such a collaborative manner. I don't think you ever incorporate everyone's wants all of the time, but I think this is the first budget since I've been on the board that has come as close as I think you can get to that. It was very refreshing not to have our normal sparring, although I did miss it with Mr. Trenum, about all the things we should cut and keep. I kind of look forward to that even, every year, even though budgets are not fun for me, but Mr. Trenum makes them fun. It's just, it's really an exciting time. I hope that our public will read and hear more about the budget in its totality and not just to focus on the school board raises. It is an important thing, just like we are expanding our staff within the Kelly Leadership Building. It's important for people who run the school system at the very high levels to be able to do their job effectively. And sometimes you need more staff to do that. We paid for a study that says it. We don't have that as school board members. But I can tell you as someone who has sat on this board and gone from right under the middle-class level to being middle-class, to teetering on maybe now, maybe middle-class, to back to middle-class, all in the six years that I have sat in this position, that raise absolutely makes a difference. It can mean whether or not I have extra gas to go to events as a school board member. It could mean whether or not I can go and donate something to a local school because that's what I choose to do with a lot of my funds. I know we had a comment from a citizen earlier who said it's $1,000 a month, that's pre-tax, just like everything else in life. That's not what we actually see. You know, it goes back to what you choose to do as an individual member on this board with your funds that are given to you. But it should be a position that people of any class can run for and feel comfortable and be able to still participate with their families and do whatever they need to do to survive. And in a county where our free and reduced lunch rate is at 40%, it is a big deal. It's a huge deal. We are the second largest county in the school division in the state of Virginia and the 35th largest in the nation. We don't have staff as board members. And that's something to think about. When you think about the leaders and what they're doing and how they're running your child's education, you want the best for your child. And it should be so. And I'm glad that we were able to do that pay study so that it could show the disparity in our staffing, how hard our staff works as a staff of one and sometimes positions in other surrounding counties as a staff of three or four. There's so much to be thankful for. And I'm glad that this budget takes the time and the opportunity to say that back in a financial way. And I also would like to take the opportunity to once again highlight our finance department for their award-winning consecutive 23-year award-winning status, because that's a big deal. I think that's also an important component to this budget. When people think about what we approve as board members, know that it's run by our finance department. Know that it's run by our staff. Before it even gets to us, there's so much work involved before that budget meets the public or even board members that there's a lot of people that get forgotten in the equation. And I think, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody because this really is an outstanding budget.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are lots of positives in this budget. The 4.8% teacher pay raise, and several of my fellow board members have talked about lots of the positives in the budget. And there's no doubt that this teacher pay raise and the staff pay raise is huge. And I'm really glad we're able to do that. That was a priority, I believe, for each one of us on the board that that happened. One of the highlights for me also is that not only is there a pay raise, but you're not going to see that disappear from your paycheck because insurance, health insurance costs have robbed it. That's one of those things we've seen year after year after year is that health insurance costs have gone up and people say, I don't see an increase in my paycheck, what happened? Well, it's been health insurance for years. And we don't have that happening in this budget. And I know our staff has also worked hard on that particular issue also. They've worked hard on making sure that the vendors we're working with, that we have the best possible provisions we can have for our staff. So not only is the division not seeing the insurance. So not only is the division not seeing the insurance cost, but also our staff members are not seeing that, and that's huge. I'm thrilled to see the 46 school counselors being added. That continues the priority this board has set on student mental health needs and reducing caseloads. Last year, I remember hearing, after we added the, after we added the social workers, counselors were saying, what about us? I'm like, stay tuned, stay tuned. Well, Dr. Waltz listened, and he put it in before we did. We didn't have a chance to put it in, because you took care of it. And so I greatly appreciate that, and that is so important for our students. Special education funding. The audit, the results of the audit were so important to all of us. The board made it clear very quickly, we wanted to see everything funded, we wanted to see it taken care of, and I'm looking forward to seeing the continued improvement for our students and families, as Mr. Wilk so eloquently talked about. There's so much that we're going to be able to do for students, and I'm very, very excited to see that we are continuing this. There are some negatives, as Mr. Trentum spoke about, the large number of central office positions. I've been on the board since 2012. It's the largest number I've seen in one budget since I've been on the board, maybe even compiling all the budgets since we've had some lean times. And that was a concern to me. I mean, yes, we've had the staffing study that said we have some gaps, as Mr. Trentum talked about, but this board never did vote like we did with the special, or didn't indicate like we did with the special education audit, that we were going to go in the direction of following all of those recommendations. But as Mr. Trentum said, we filled a lot of positions, and so I really, as I expressed in the work session, I want to see us do as much as we can to help students. And Dr. Waltz, in response to that, you did add the six PE teachers as a pilot to start working toward addressing the elementary school PE situation. And I know I received some questions about that, I still have to give some answers. There are some PE teachers still confused, if there could be an explanation, actually, I guess we'll have an explanation tonight, as we hopefully approve the internal study regarding current physical education staffing. And so as a board, hopefully, we'll continue to look at this as a division. Dr. Waltz, thank you for continuing to look at that. There's a lot we have to do. This board, this budget is such a big budget, we're a big division, and we have a lot of needs. We haven't caught up with what we need to catch up with since the recession. Class size reduction, that's something that's been very, very important to me, and we're only maintaining the status quo. Now, I understand we're still working on adding the classroom space so we can reduce class sizes, but it's really frustrating to me still that we're only maintaining the status quo. So I hope that this board continues to work hard on that. On the upside, with the capital improvements program, several years ago, I forget which year it was, if it was somewhere between, I want to say 2013, 2014, somewhere in that timeframe, we had to push back the 13th high school, because we hadn't, and this is back in the day, and we haven't, aren't doing it now, we had to push back the high school, because we didn't have the property yet. And because we did that, we were able to address the eastern elementary school needs, because we saw a crisis in eastern elementary schools, and we are seeing the fruition of all of that work. We've seen all of that work. We've got the Parkway School opening, we've got all the additions that have just, that are just being completed, the huge boundary change that we just tackled, and we're seeing all of that hard work that we started years ago. A lot of us were on the board back when we started that. We made it a priority back then that we were going to add those classrooms, and it's happening. And so our CIP has been addressing that and continues to keep working. For example, we still, in the class size reduction program, the $174 million that needs to be funded, we still need to find an elementary school in Woodbridge, and those are things that the school board, working with the board accounting supervisors, we have to continue to work on, so that we can make sure we're providing that classroom space for all of our students. I will be voting for this budget also, and as Mr. Wilk did, I have something I need to read, too. Declaration of Personal Interest on Matter Affecting Close Relative of School Board Member pursuant to PWCS Policy 114 Conflict of Interest and Virginia's Local and State Conflict of Interest Act in conjunction with the school board's vote on the FY20 budget. I am confirming in open session that the school board, the superintendent and his staff, and by virtue of this declaration, the public, have been informed of the fact that my daughter is an employee of the National Captioning Institute, which provides services to the Prince William County Public Schools through the media department. My daughter, however, does not provide such services to PWCS, and neither my daughter nor myself have been involved directly or indirectly in any transactions involving the provision of such services. I confirm that this relationship will not prevent me from voting on this matter impartially, fairly, objectively, and solely in the public interest. Signed, Allison Satterwhite. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention our teachers aides. They did get a raise. Hopefully, next year, it'd be a little bit more. Because we need them so much, they need to be paid a little bit more. But I want to thank the superintendent. This is really a good budget to look at. The state that I come from, and the city that I come from, they'd still be arguing, fighting, trying to have a fit, because there wasn't enough money. California has a different budget. It's always called broke to teachers. So, thank you. I really thank you very much for seeing this. I lived long enough, didn't I, to see it? Thank you.
Ms. Williams. Oh, you're good. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll finish off. Just to highlight, in this budget, we have over $30 million in additional funds going to staff raises. That is the largest amount in well over a decade. So this is a, this is a significant push on that front, and I think it's something that there's been a lot of talk of, and something that hopefully we continue to do to keep pace with where things need to go. I think to echo what's been said by a number of other board members, this budget represents the culmination of a lot of different efforts that we've worked on over the last four years, whether it's the special ed audit, which we started, I think even in our first, first spring, requesting that, getting it funded, making it happen, now working on implementation on something that's been, been very critical, and we've, we've done a number of other things over the course of this last four years to work to hopefully improve special education services for all students. And then also, the Infrastructure Task Force Committee was something that Mr. Trentum pushed for a long time. We finally made it happen. We had two years of study by some incredible community representatives to really evaluate our school buildings, and there's a lot out of that that we can do. We started doing some of that in the last budget. We're doing a number of things in this budget to help bring up to speed a number of our older facilities, and make sure that as many students as possible are getting as equal as a facility usage as possible. We've got a wide disparity in ages in our buildings, but we're, we're working hard to equalize those opportunities. And in the, in the capital improvement program, we are finalizing the turf field rollout. It's only one item, but it's a number of, there's a number of things we're doing from the Infrastructure Task Force Committee. Two of the older schools in the county are Osborne Park and Hilton High School, and they're going to be getting turf fields within the next two years in the CIP, which is a very good thing. Hilton High School is also getting a major refresh that we're getting ready to work on very aggressively, as well as some improvements for Osborne Park High School as well, one of our, definitely our oldest schools in the county. And so those are all, those are all really exciting things in the budget. Budget season is always, is always an interesting time, because it's about weighing and balancing priorities, funding them, and there's a number of those that we've, that we've done a very good job on. And one of the things over the last number of years, obviously, has been a focus on trailer reduction. And we've taken very aggressive efforts over the last four years to improve our efforts on that front. And we're going to, we have a plan, we're going to work on funding it, but we've got, to even have a plan in place that is feasible, that would include the near or total elimination of trailers is a, is a major step. We have a much lower trailer usage here in Prince William County than in Fairfax, which is something that we should be proud of already. But based on the rebounding proposals that we just did in Ocwen, removing roughly 40 trailers, based on what we're about to do with the high schools, which will probably be 35, 40 trailers, hopefully we can eliminate on western high schools. If you're looking at about 75, 80 trailers, you're getting rid of about 200, we're going to pass boundary plans this year that'll get rid of about 40% of trailers. That's a, that's a huge step, and that's not something that's just a result of work this year. It's the work done for quite a few years, and definitely a, a large focus over these last four years. And so, you know, hopefully, we'll have taken a major, major effort on that front. And I think one of the things that we can start focusing even more heavily while we keep working on it over the past budgets, but we can have that same laser-like intensity on class size reduction, now that we've, we've aggressively gotten this trailer situation under control and have a plan to continue to keep it under control. And so, looking forward to doing, continuing to work on that in the future. One of, budgets are always interesting, because you're trying to figure out how much money you have and how you're going to spend it. And I remember the end of last year, we were told, guys, next year's budget's going to be really tight. Don't expect a whole lot, it'll be tight, it'll be tight. And so, you know, you start planning things in advance for this year's budget, and I don't think we were expecting to have a whole lot of money. And then come this year, we find out, nope, we've actually got one of the largest budgets we've, we've dealt with. And so, that ends up having a totally different calculation in terms of what, what you can do, what you can hope to do. And I think there's always, I think there's always, we find out every year, there's always a little more money. We've found ways to, we've found additional funds, even in tighter years, where we can, we can pull out a little more money, make a couple more things happen. We can, we can review a few more things. And so, no matter what, we have to, have to keep looking at that, and hopefully, we can, in the future, as we have the large amounts of money, be able to focus on more macro plans, whether it's adjusting pay scales, whether it's doing what we can to increase or to, to reduce class sizes, because that's a, it's a large budget item to aggressively go after. And so hopefully, hopefully, in future budgets, if, if this kind of large amount of money continues, we can have that, those discussions as well, to, to do the, the large macro things as well as some of the, the smaller things that we did to help round things out. Oh, and then I guess one more thing, the, the, I guess it's an election year, the one thing everybody seems to be focused on, instead of all the other things I just talked about, right, is school board salaries. So I guess, you know, I think when we, as school board members, run for these positions, we look at these positions, I think a lot of us look at this in terms of public service. And I think there's been a lot of conversations about, you know, if you, if you don't, because of where our salary is, there's only so much money, or there's only so, so high an income level you can expect somebody to, to have if they're going to run for a position like this. Honestly, my household income, when I first ran, is probably below 2/3 the average income of the county. I'm not a well-off rich guy. So it's just how we, how we, how we go about this. I knew what the, the time and the salary was coming in, and that's, it's not, it's not something we, we come here expecting to make a whole lot of money. And anyway, that's.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Okay, everyone's had their say. I'm going to just wrap up with a couple more thank yous. I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else said, but I'll take a little issue with Gil, and lots of money, Gil, lots of money. We are way behind our neighbors as far as per pupil spending, and you will continue to hear me talk about that. We have the first good budget in many, many years, and that's not an accident. I want to thank Governor Northam, Secretary Carney, they have committed to education as a high priority when they put this budget together. The General Assembly, and I'm going to go ahead and name them, because I think we ought to thank them publicly, and I'll name all of them, Delegate Luke Torian, Delegate Halayala, Delegate Elizabeth Guzman, Lee Carter, Danica Rome, Jennifer Carol Foy, Timothy Hugo, Senator McPike, Senator Servell, Senator Barker, Senator Stewart, Board of County Chairman Corey Stewart. The money that we got this year comes partly from the work that the General Assembly has done, what our county board of supervisors have done, and the work that our staff has done to make the dollars go a lot farther than I think they go in other places. And so I want to congratulate everyone for their work. I can't thank our delegation, who goes to Richmond on our behalf, both parties, for working hard, for the governor to highlight education as part of his budget. This is not an accident. This didn't just happen overnight, because there was extra money laying around. This happened because the Commonwealth of Virginia put a priority on education this year. And if we continue to do that and continue to further invest in our own folks, I think you're going to get a huge return on investment. I am very proud tonight to support this budget, and at this point, I'll ask the board members to please vote on the fiscal year 2020 budget.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, excellent. Thank you all for all your hard work. I can't thank you again. We're going to move on to, oh, some exciting stuff. 1703, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAFR Report. I think Mr. Wallingford will be up, and he did not follow my five-slide rule. There's 11 here, but that's okay.
Mr. Wallingford. Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Waltz. Tonight, and Taft and Lisa are handing these out right now, is providing you for your information, Prince William County Public Schools Fiscal Year 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Every year at the end of the fiscal year, the accounting staff and the Office of Financial Services, led by our new Finance Director Lisa Thorne, and Taft Kelly, our Chief Accountant, engage in a process that includes production of our financial statements, and with Cherry Becker, an audit of these financial statements. This audit is done in conjunction with an audit that is taking place at the county, with the County Board of Supervisors as well. Tonight, we will receive an audit from Mr., an audit report from Mr. Greg Miller, who is a senior manager with Cherry and Becker.
Good evening, and I'll make the 11 slides pretty brief for you. I'll skip the first two and cut the first two off the, off the top right there. On slide, on slide three is a summary of our engagement services. This summarizes what Cherry Becker has been engaged to perform on behalf of the schools, the first being a financial statement audits over the financial, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report put together by management under the board's supervision. There's also a compliance portion of this. This relates to governmental auditing standards, which is an additional layer on top of the generally accepted auditing standards within the United States. There's also a portion of compliance requirements that are required to be tested every year, related to your federal, spending of federal dollars, and there's also a portion from the state in spending state dollars. The last piece is an examination, and that's examining the census data provided to the Virginia retirement system, from which the pension and OPEB liability amounts are calculated and then reported in your financial statements. Continuing on to slide four is a summary of our service deliverables. This is our final report. You should have received a copy of the CAFR in front of you. It's a fairly large document. Most of this is put together, the vast majority of this is put together by your finance department. We only put in a handful of pieces of paper within there. But to summarize what's in that, those couple of pages that Cherry Becker puts into the CAFR, is our audit opinion, and that covers the basic financial statements and the notes to the financial statements. We also issue an in relation to opinion on the supplementary information. That's, that information is materially correct in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. There are also sections in here that are unaudited, that includes the introductory section, the required supplementary information, and the statistical section. There's also portions of the school board's organization that are not within the scope of our audit, and those audits were performed by other auditors, and our opinion makes reference to those auditors. As I mentioned, those two sections within the, the school board's organizations are the Student Activity Funds and Spark, the Prince William County Schools, School Foundation. The main slide that you probably want to hear me talk about is slide six, slightly over the five-slide minimum. The first piece is the Financial Statement Audit Opinions. We issued our opinion on December 20, 2018, and our opinion is unmodified, or a clean opinion, that is what you're looking for from your external auditors. In relation, or in the Control and Compliance Reports, first, going over the governmental auditing standards, we did have a significant deficiency that we reported over internal controls over inventory, that relates to certain inventory that was that relates to certain inventory that was discovered at certain warehouses during the time period under audit. From a federal spending and, from a federal spending standpoint, there was also, there were no material weaknesses and no reported instances of noncompliance that we noted during our testing. From a state compliance standpoint, we had one conflict of interest finding relating to conflict of interest forms. In regards to examination, we issued our opinion on the census data provided to the VRS in September of 2018, and that was unmodified or clean, the type of opinion you were looking for. Slide seven through the end is primarily our required communications that are required to be communicated to those charged with governance by the government auditing standards. The first is accounting policies. There was an adoption of one new accounting policy. That was GASB 75, which is accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits. So, this is for the first year. Financial line item of the financial statements was added. It used to always be in the notes over OPEB liabilities. So, there was a reduction of about $167 million in net position of the school board to bring on the OPEB liability for the first time to the face of the financial statements. Detail information of that is included in the end of note one, and there's also a note on the OPEB plan within the financial statements. During the compilation of financial statements, there's, not every single number is tied steadfast to an invoice or to a check or to a cash receipt. There are items in there that require management's judgment and accounting estimates. A summary of those items are on page seven. We review those estimates, compare them to industry normals, as well as historical trends here at the schools, and to test the reasonableness of management's estimates for those line items. Continuing on to slide eight, the, these three bullets kind of look a little onerous at first with on their headers, but I assure you they are not onerous. They're all good news to report here. We had no audit adjustments presented to management to record. There were no disagreements with management, and we had no difficulties encountered while performing the audit. I would like to appreciate John, Lisa, and Taft's help in preparing everything for the audit and having everything available, complete and accurate the first time going around, which makes it nice and easy to get in, out, and provide you the type of opinion you guys are looking for. On slide nine, if we were to become aware of any consultation with other accountants, we would be required to inform you of those consultations, and we were not made aware, we did not see any instances in which management consulted with other CPA firms. From a client communication, we did maintain, we did receive a representation letter from school management. That's management taking responsibility for the financial statements and telling us that what they provided us is everything and as much as what they know about the information included within the CAFR. And lastly, I'm also required annually to positively affirm to you that we are independent of the school board of accounting, and without being independent, then our opinion probably would not matter too much to you from that standpoint. The last item I would like to leave you with are future accounting and reporting changes. These are two of the largest ones that'll have a significant impact on the school board as they come to roll out. The first being GASB 84, which deals with fiduciary activities. The biggest impact on this specifically for school board could be the consideration of how student activity funds are currently reported within the financial statements, within the CAFR. And that will be effective for fiscal year 2020. For fiscal year 2021 is GASB 87 of leases. There's been significant changes in the accounting world for leases, both internationally, corporate here in America, and now as well as the governments here in America. We currently have a two-model focus, which has capital leases and operating leases. Going forward, there'll be a single model that'll be a capital lease only, so any type of lease will become a right-to-use asset as well as a liability on the face of the financial statements. So, with that, I appreciate your time and attention, and appreciate your all's trust in Cherry Becker to your external auditors.
Mr. Miller, thank you so much. Thank you for the work you do with our Joint Audit Committee with the county as well. And I think if there's any questions, Ms. Jessie.
Okay. Slide six. The significant deficiency in internal controls over inventory. Could you give me more information on that? More depths of, exactly depth of what the, those deficiencies were and solutions recommended? Thank you.
Sure. So, during the course of the audit, and actually, management discovered this and informed us about it. During the course of any year, there are inventory observations that are, that occur. So, people go out and physically count the inventory at different types of year to maintain the perpetual inventory system. During that inventory count, there was a significant amount of inventory that was discovered, that was on hand, that wasn't a warehouse, that hadn't been included in the system, roughly 500,000, look for Lisa or John, in that ballpark. So, there was a control that was working that finally caught it. It's mainly around the timeliness of catching when that inventory was there. We really have no way of telling when that inventory was actually acquired and put into the warehouse, but there's just inventory that was sitting in there during inventory observation that was discovered. So, that's just a response to the controls around inventory to make sure that as we get inventory, it's included into the system.
So, does that still exist, or you wouldn't know? That wouldn't be your?
I don't know if today they still exist, but they were in the, they were in existence during the ware, during the inventory count.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, Ms. Jessie, we have inventory in several places in the school division. We have inventory with Chuck Wheeler in the warehouse, obviously, but we also have it in facilities and transportation and food service. And the inventory that Mr. Miller is referring to is inventory that we maintain in our Facility Services Department. It's something that we're aware of, and it's something that we have to get on an annual basis onto our balance sheet, and that's something we'll be working on this year. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Excellent report, folks. We'll move on to 1801. What are we doing here? Yep, 1801, the approval of the internal study regarding the current PE staffing. This is for information?
It's for action.
Or for action, for action. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the superintendent's recommendation and authorize an internal study of current elementary school physical education staffing to include input from current elementary physical education staff.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Excellent. Please vote.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Deutsch. Yeah, Deutsch.
Can we, sorry, can we get just some detail or explanation just for the public and for the board of just how this staffing study is going to work and how it's going to operate? I thought we were-
Dr. Walts.
Well, since this is something that just came to our attention, we don't have a lot of detail at this point, but that's the reason for putting this committee together and getting it authorized by the school board. But one thing that we are already working on is looking at the numbers in each school, in each elementary school. This is an elementary physical education issue, and then what the staffing dollars are currently, where that money is lodged in the budget, how much of the decisions that are made with the allocations that are given are under the principal's prerogative versus, you know, do you really have the money? You could hire a second teacher with the allocation you have. All of those things have to be sorted out. The other thing that, that I chose to do is put the six positions in the budget in order to jumpstart the work once we kind of get a handle on, on where we are. So, for example, if the allocation includes enough money for, let's say, one and a half teachers, we may split one of those positions. We might even be able to help a number of schools beyond six schools. So, it won't necessarily mean we're just putting a second full-time, one of those six positions in a school. We'll have to see what the allocation for each elementary school is, and then what it would take to make sure that we're utilizing certified physical education teachers in the instruction. The other piece I mentioned in the work session is we want to make absolutely sure with site-based management that we have, in this pilot year, the principal, the current physical education teacher at the elementary level, and the teaching assistant on the same page if they want to be a part of this pilot. So, I'm aware of at least some places where things seem to be working beautifully, and they don't necessarily want to be a part of the first-year pilot, in which case, we would skip over that school and go to the next school in line. So, again, we want to move very carefully and not necessarily force people to do something until we've had a little bit more time to look at this in the first year.
Thank you. And I think we had discussed earlier that possibly this study group is going to be a mix of PE teachers and staff, and can you just talk at all about thoughts on the composition of what-
Yes, that's correct. We want to make sure that, first of all, that we're going to have at least an opportunity for any physical education teacher to weigh in, and second, that we're going to have one or more meetings for which they could all attend if they chose. And then on the committee itself, we will have several physical education teachers, again, volunteering. We were not going to force anyone to do it, but we want to have several physical education teachers represented on the committee with staff.
Ms. Jessie.
I just wanted to commend you for this particular action. My question is, in the selection process of the six schools, one, will PE teachers be involved in that, or will that just be a principal decision? And secondly, are you going to look at the block schedule, the elementary block schedule, and understand the impact of that? And also, the third would be the physical plant considerations of those schools.
So, let me start with the first one, which was, is it solely going to be the decision of the principal? And again, I would expect the physical education teacher at the building, at each building, to be in consultation with not just the principal, but also if they have a teaching assistant, and that hopefully, we could get everyone on the same page. And I'm certainly the last person in this room that needs to tell you, a long-term sitting principal, that in the end, we like to try to let the principal be in charge of their building. With that being said, we know that it's important to collaborate with the people working there.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one other, one other question, Dr. Walts. Is there any plan on including the PWA or that group in part of this discussion as well?
I won't stake my life on this, but I can't think of a study group that we haven't included our associations, and we always welcome our associations and their input. I know I, we have one of our associations, Riley O'Casey, is the president of that organization. We've already talked about it at our last one-on-one meeting, so yes.
Thank you.
Please vote. You may have, you may. I voted already.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Dr. Walts, superintendent's time.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Little unique presentation tonight. I'll go through the verbal parts first. First of all, I want to congratulate Chuck Drake and the Virginia Star Program for achieving the $1 million mark as measured in donations of computers to this program. Thirteen PWCS schools are a part of the Virginia Star Program, and many of the donated laptops that were refurbished are given to families who live within Prince William County. The remaining computers are given to other Virginia schools. So, these really go to families where they cannot afford a computer, and it's really amazing the impact when you think about achieving the $1 million mark in donated computers. And I just want to say Chuck Drake is Virginia Star, in my opinion. He got it started. We are the pass-through for the entire state, every school division that has it in the state. Their program is coordinated, and the money flows through Prince William County and through Chuck Drake, who is retiring this year, and I just want to give a shout-out to him for the amazing work that he has done, and all the families that he has helped to gain access to computer technology. I want to give out a shout-out to the Executive Director of Spark, Sharon Henry, and again, I would say she is the spark in our education foundation. She, too, is retiring. When she started here during my first year, we, we raised a few hundred thousand dollars, and under her leadership, we have topped over $6 million in donated services, materials, and in-kind service this past year. So, she has done an amazing job, and I know that each and every one of you appreciate her contributions to our school division. Last weekend, I attended Cedar Point Elementary's production of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. It was amazing. Great job by Director Ms. LaFleur, Art Director Mrs. Dartor, Music Director Mr. Davis, and the 99 actors and actresses who were a part of that amazing production. Thanks also to the volunteers who made it happen. It was outstanding. I was very pleased to be with Board Member Satterwhite to celebrate Battlefield High School's School of Excellence. For the eighth time, it's very hard to achieve as a high school, I want to thank all the students who participated that day, from the junior ROTC, that's the Air Force JROTC, who presented the colors, Mr. Zach Saunders, who's the Director of the Battlefield Chamber Players, offered great music throughout that. Again, I shared the stage with Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Mulgrew was also there, and representatives from the administration at Battlefield. Wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Kurt Boyd, who's the SCA President, gave an amazing speech. If you were a teacher sitting in that audience, you had to feel good about how he characterized personal stories of what some of those teachers taught him over the course of his days at Battlefield. So, over the past weeks, I've had an opportunity to visit many of our students and staff members at schools across the division. Recently, I visited Colgan High School and Patriot High School. And again, as part of my effort to improve communications, out in the schools even more, I go to every school every year. I've gone to some schools as many as five and six times this year, and am continuing that. And we're also putting out some very, very short videos, and I've got a couple of them that are like one minute to share with you. This is Colgan and Patriot. How's it going, guys? When I'm going out and hiring people, I try to find people who know more about some area of running the school division that I don't know. I really try to surround myself with people who have skill sets that I don't have.
Good morning, Mr. Walts. My name's Bradley, big fan.
Hi, Bradley. Good to see you.
Hi, I follow you on Twitter.
What makes you feel satisfied with your job?
Yes, so I would say, since we are an educational institution, the most satisfied thing that we have accomplished, we have raised the graduation rate in Prince William County 10 percentage points since the time I arrived. Now, that has been because of excellent teachers each and every day.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. I thought you were going to sing.
That's what I was waiting for. I can't reveal everything in one night.
I see, I see. Well, after passing your budget, I expected a song.
In the making.
Okay. So, I think we'll move to, where am I? I think we are, oh, no. Okay, 1901, reappointment of the school board members to the Joint CIP Committee. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I'd like to move that the Prince William County School Board continue its membership on the Joint CIP Committee with the current members due to special circumstances of it being an election year. The current school board committee members are Ms. Jessie, Ms. Lori Williams, Mr. Gil Trenum. Membership to the committee will be reviewed when the new school board is seated in January 20- 2020.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Trenum, second.
Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
Just for a little more background information for the board and for the public. So our current terms, according to the Joint CIP Committee Charter, for the seated members expired in the spring. We, at the last committee meeting, asked for each member to go back to their respective boards and seek approval for continued participation on the committee. And to ask to see if the current members would like to continue for the remainder of this calendar year, due to it being an election year. We just thought it would help with continuity. Of course, it is up to the individual members on the committee if they would like to continue. I don't think anybody objected. But it was just important so that we're in compliance with our charter and that we can keep the work going on the CIP Committee.
Okay, great. Mr. Trenum, or Mr. Deutsch.
Sorry. Couple questions. So I think we passed the charter roughly two years ago. We had a lot of those conversations heading into then, because this is the two-year anniversary of these terms, right? Am I right in that?
Yeah, it was in March.
Yeah, okay. So then, I guess, this motion states that there's the special circumstance of an election year this year. When we passed the charter back then, did we not anticipate that there was an election coming right after this term?
Just to answer, this is the charter that I was referring to was the Joint CIP Committee Charter.
Correct, right, yeah.
Which is what the committee has asked the boards to vote on. Our, when we took the vote in February of 2017, we didn't specify a term limit. So this is generated from the committee to the back to the boards, not necessarily what the boards themselves voted on initially.
Wait, so where is this charter you're asking us to vote on?
I'm not asking you to vote on a charter. I'm giving you the background information coming out of the committee. The Joint CIP Committee itself has a charter, and it specifies term limits within that charter. The school board did not specify term limits when we voted to add members.
Right, so in, but I think we had some conversations as we formed the group about how long they're going to last. But you're saying in the group's charter is a two-year term?
Correct.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So I guess, there's nothing really unforeseen about an election year happening two years after two years ago, because we always know when those come up. That part seems a little odd. And I think at the time, we had talked about rotating members and rolling members. And I think that's a good thing, to give new members perspectives, bring new people in, bring some fresh blood. I guess one other thing I'm trying to figure out about this motion, are we stating then unequivocally that all of the terms expire, I guess, December 31st of this year?
Yes.
Because we've, I think we first elected Mr. Brand, and then we just, Mr. Trenum just rolled on because that board position was slotted in there. So are we saying we're basically electing everybody for an eight-month term here? Or nine months?
Let me go to Mr. Trenum.
Yeah.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Deutsch, so this was discussed, and this was agreement by both sides of the, both sides of the Joint CIP Committee, as far as to try and maintain continuity, to get it through this election season, because there, we anticipate there could be, there could be some change in the seats, and we didn't want to sit somebody and then have to re-seat somebody and bring people up to speed, and with the transitioning. For instance, Brentsville's seat will definitely be somebody different next year from the school board. So, so as opposed to trying to bring somebody in and then having things swap around, both sides of the committee agreed that we would just take it through the end of the, through the end of the year. And that also kind of aligns it with our regular process of the school board of assigning all the, making all the committee assignments effective in January. So it kind of gets us lined up with that. So it's, like you said, it's really about an eight-month extension, is what I see it.
I think Ms. Williams was next, and then Ms. Jessie.
Thank you. Mr. Trenum just pretty much said everything I just said.
Okay, Ms. Jessie.
I think the board supervisors already made their vote. I think the only difference was Mr., who decided they did not?
Cannon.
Cannon decided, Mr. Cannon decided that he did not want to continue. I think he was replaced by Mr. Noe because of his decision. The three of us are willing to just finish this term, and that way, you'd have continuity. And when the election takes place, then there would be a rotation.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you. All right, I appreciate those clarifications. One thing, I think there's been a lot of productive things out of this committee that have happened. But is there any way that the board can be briefed as a whole by the committee members? Because there's, I think there's been a lot of conversations that have happened at these joint committee meetings that take a while to filter back, and there's really no kind of official channel or report or anything for where we, I think sometimes we find out very late, oh, well, that's something we talked about at a number of meetings ago. And I think having some kind of mechanism to really understand what's happening for the rest of the board and get that report back would be very helpful.
Yeah, Mr. Deutsch, good question. Ms. Williams had sent an email saying she'd like, from now on, standing position on the agenda for a report back from the meeting. Is that correct, Ms. McGowan?
That's correct, and we have it on for the April 3rd meeting.
So we will continue to have it as a standing spot in the agenda for a report back from our committee members to the Joint CIP. Ms. Satterwhite, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been reference to the charter, and I don't believe the board has approved a charter. Could that charter be brought to us so that we could? It seems like if there's going to be something between the two boards, that we, as a board, would agree to it.
It's a charter for the committee, specific to the committee. It's not a school board or a Board of County Supervisors charter. It's the charter establishing the guidelines and what the function of the committee is.
Okay, it just, it just seems to me like the board, if it specifies the length of the terms, things like that, since this is a joint committee, it does seem like we should at least have a copy of it. So just asking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Ms. McGowan, yeah, Ms. McGowan, can you just provide us a copy of the charter, and then just legally-wise, make sure that we are in compliance with whether we need to approve a charter or not?
I will, and I'm going to consult with the county attorney to make sure that we're on the same page with the Board of County Supervisors.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please vote.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
We will now move to 1902. Board matters. We'll start with Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick meeting. I don't think I've got a lot to report back, but had a fun time Friday morning over at Kyle Wilson Elementary School. Got to visit the kids there. We read to them as they were getting ready for all of their St. Patrick's Day fun. They were all building leprechaun traps and having a lot of fun doing it. And the community is always incredibly involved there. There were a number of moms and community members who were helping with shaved ice cream cone, or shaved ice station there. And they're always so supportive of the teachers and what's happening there. They had a loaded baked potato bar, and all the teachers were loving that. So it was a, it was a fun morning, and always appreciate some time to be able to get out there. One event coming up, I believe, on Saturday, most, for most of the day, is the Hilton High School Sizzle Conference. I think it starts roughly about 8:00, 8:30 in the morning, runs through about 3:00. It's a really exciting cultural experience, and they've got a really incredible cultural program there at Hilton High School with different foreign languages that they're teaching, different cultural experiences with students coming in from other countries. And it's just a day to learn about different cultures, enjoy different foods, learn about customs, have different presentations, and it's been, it's been a fun one. So if anybody wants to stop by, definitely would be an exciting event for people to enjoy it.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Wilk. I just want to reiterate again how excited I am about this budget and that it passed. I am very excited about the additional staff that we're having, and I just wanted to remind the public and all that matter, that when we talk about class size reduction, it's more than elimination of trailers. It's also about facility space. It's also about staff. It's not just, we can't simply wipe away trailers and think that we're going to improve class size reduction, because it's not one and the same. It's a, it's a part of it. And reducing the size of students in a class is a, it's a multiple, it's a multi-pronged issue. And I just, I think sometimes we think if we get rid of all the trailers, that will magically reduce the class sizes. And I just want us to be mindful as we move forward in, to the future, and thinking about those things, that it has to be looked at from a multiple perspectives. And I also want to make the same plea that I'm, I think I'm pretty committed to making until I see it happen, is I hope that this board will consider the development of an equity committee to look at our school system from the top to bottom, because I think that there's things that we can always improve on. We know when we have an equitable system, it does bring about things like, excuse me, reducing the achievement gap, providing a better outcome for all of our students and staff. And that is something that I'm always a proponent of and have been since I've been elected to the board. I would like to hear more about the past and how we've improved Eastern End school outcomes, since Ms. Satterwhite said, I think I missed something there, and I always like to go back and, and learn more about things that I don't understand as clearly. So, Ms. Satterwhite, I hope maybe we can get some time, and you can give me a little bit of history of prior to my sitting on the board, and some of the things that you're more knowledgeable about on how it improved our Eastern End schools. I was really interested when you said that comment earlier, and...
That was referring to building classrooms.
Oh, it was just building classrooms?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because I know that you've been on the board a little bit longer than I have, and sometimes I think, new members, we may miss something because we weren't here. So, thank you for that clarification. And then, last but not least, I can't go without mentioning the absolutely fantastic history that was just made on St. Patrick's Day by one of my favorite organizations in this whole school division, because I am a huge, huge marching band fan. And that is Freedom Soul Squad, that performed in New York City on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And if you don't know, let me tell you, that is the oldest parade in the country. So when I spoke to you a couple of months ago and told you they were going to do it, not only did they do it, but they rocked it. And as the students that I now know is the new term for being cool, as I was informed by a bunch of seniors, they were crack. So, now I've said it from the, my cool way of saying it, they were cool, but also from a student way. And I know I'm taking up a little bit more time, but it is history, and they deserve, and I hope you will join me, a round of applause in their accomplishments, not only getting there, but getting selected, performing, and representing our division fantastically.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
So, thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
I wanted to congratulate Ms. Diane Rosson, who received an award from the Dale City Christian Church. And this award ceremony, I think, is about 30 years old, and they select various people. And I think yours is in public service, along with Ms. Joanne Bonner Reese. Ms. Joanne Bonner Reese, if you don't know her, everybody knows her. But she, she has done some work at the White House. And she, she, her husband started, gave the first "I Have a Dream" speech for Martin Luther King. She and her husband started the MLK, not the oratorical, but the actual program. And we're coming up on the 30th anniversary for the oratorical, and the 35th anniversary for that. But these two ladies were there in their glory, and it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. In terms of the equity situation, I know I'm scheduled to meet with Mr. Iman, and I thank Ms. Casada to talk about that. I have been selected to be on the task force for challenging schools, to talk about closing the achievement gap, and I'll go to a meeting, I think it's on the 30th, so I think I'm going to be able to meet with you guys when I come back. But I agree that we really do need to look at equity, not just for performance, but for infrastructure and various components. And again, this budget, I just want to congratulate you. You know that I've been on this trailer thing for quite some time, ever since I've been here, and I agree with you, it's not just the reduction of trailers, it is also building schools where we can get some of these kids out of trailers into a school. So, thank you so much for what you've done for me for Akokwana. I appreciate it. And also for Woodbridge High School, that extra gym, they're, they're not able, and the field, we didn't get exactly what we wanted, but we got a feel, because they've not been able to practice on that field. They call it the swamp. And so, thank you very, very much. And personally, I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but for those people who, the board and people from your staff who sent flowers to me for my sister, as you guys know, this is the third sister I've lost since I've been here, and it really meant a lot to us. And they were beautiful flowers. And Dr. Walsh, you sent me one of the most beautiful cards. I thought Delaney must have selected this card, but you said you did, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. My family appreciates it. Thank you.
Ms. Rosson.
I pass.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Number one, I want to express thanks. That was passed on to me by some of the students and the parents of some of the sports teams at Stonewall Jackson High School. I want to thank Ms. Goss, especially for her and her staff's work on helping resolve some schedule issues that I know she worked extra hard on. See, I didn't forget. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the staffing study, because we've talked a lot about that. And I did read it, Dr. Walsh. There's a couple of things in there I especially noted. One of them is under best practices, it said, develop and implement a zero-based budgeting process that delineates and prioritizes the true needs of the division. I know we were doing that before, and then I go off to Africa, and what happens? I'm not sure. But I look forward to seeing us recharge that in the next future, even though, like I said, I may not be here, but I'll always be here.
Still going on each year.
Very good. So, we just haven't talked about it then. The other thing I noticed in there was one of the benchmarks that had to do with the lifespan of buses. Our buses have, we have a 14-year lifespan on our buses. The benchmark there for the jurisdictions that was included was 15 years. So we were falling right in there. I remember the year that, I guess when I first got on this board, we were replacing buses every 11 years. And when money got tight, I was asked the question, can't we just extend the life of these buses a little bit? And I remember the reaction I got. I thought, it was like I was going to send our kids out on broken-down jalopies that were going to fall apart while they were riding in them. So I personally felt very validated by that. So thank you, Dr. Walsh. That's all.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Walsh, I want to thank you for surprising the students of Stonewall Jackson High School for the IB 10th Grade English Personal Projects. So I had the pleasure of attending. We saw Mr. Lem's class projects. The projects were absolutely fantastic. As it was described to me and as I saw, it was kind of like a science fair, except they were personal projects the students researched and worked on. I learned about the keto diet, which, keto, keto? Keto, thank you. I learned about the keto diet. See, I'm still learning. I learned about the language Bengali. A young lady, it was her family language, and she learned how to not only speak it, but also write it in the course of the project, and she spelled my name out for me in Bengali. One student developed an app for students who have anxiety and depression, and Apple is actually looking at it for consideration. It's a free app right now. One student, and this one just completely blew me away, she had, she drew. She's done pencil sketchwork. She's never had formal art classes. For her project, she decided to learn how to paint with acrylics, and her painting was absolutely stunning. I couldn't get away from it for a while. It was, it was so stunning. The work that the students did, the work they put into it, was just absolutely amazing. While there, also like Dr. Walsh, I also went down and visited the cosmetology program and learned a tremendous amount about their program and saw some of the students at work. So thank you to Stonewall Jackson High School for your hospitality. Battlefield High School, the same day, held their School of Excellence event, as Dr. Walsh mentioned, and want to congratulate Battlefield High School on the third straight School of Excellence. And Dr. Walsh, I don't know when you fit it in, because I somehow missed it, but I saw a picture that you were involved in a promposal, that Steve approves of a promposal. So that's a new one. Haven't seen that one before. That one, I don't think made Twitter yet. And then, oh, it has made Twitter, okay. I've been a little busy today, getting ready for the meeting. I'll have to check that out. Town Hall on Internet Safety was held at Battlefield High School on Monday night, and I want to thank Y Inc. for organizing everything with the participants and presenters. Want to thank the department, participants from the Department of Homeland Security, the Virginia Attorney General's Office, Internet Crimes Against Children, Officer Roll, and SRO Sheldon. Rolle and SRO Sheldon from the Prince William County Police Department, the David J. Cobb Foundation, Paton's Project, the National Alliance on Mental Health, Action and Community Through Service, Novant Health, UVA Health System, Prince William County Schools. There were over 110 people who attended, and then I also want to give a special thanks to Alvy Elementary School Counselor Ann Henry, who livestreamed the event. We now have over 1,100 views. So for parents who are interested in what's going on right now in internet safety, how students are pulled in and groomed with sex trafficking, there's so much information that was in this presentation. And parents, it's incredibly value, valuable. You can see this on the Alvy Elementary Counseling Facebook page, or a link to it from a post on my Twitter page or Facebook page. Great information. I want to thank everybody who worked so hard for that presentation and everyone who came out that evening. That's all for now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of highlights and events. Since the last board meeting, right before this event, I was able to visit Ashland's 5th Grade Science Fair. That was a great event. Was able to stop by and talk with some of the judges and students before coming here on this wonderful night. Last night, I was in the company, company, Mr., Dr. Waltz, we were at Grand Park, and we were attending the Strings Concert with Grand Park, Patty, Dumfries, and Triangle. So that was a great event. The students really seemed excited to see you. Lots of selfies, lots of swarming. It was, it was something else. But yes, thank you for coming. I think the students really appreciated it. It all was spawned by a student reaching out to Dr. Waltz, asking him to attend his Strings Concert, and so he did attend. So that was awesome. Made his day, and his parents. I also attended Covington Harper's 5th Grade Concert a couple days ago. Last weekend, or was it the weekend before, I did attend the Special Education 20th Anniversary Transition Fair. Great event, a lot of community involvement, a lot of different organizations, associations, and of course, our wonderful staff was there and present for, again, the 20th anniversary, a major event for families with special needs, children looking for different opportunities, summer programs, transition services out of high school to the next stages. So it was a very good event. Attended Henderson Elementary's PTO Bingo Night. That was a little while ago, about two weeks ago. And then also, right after the last board meeting, major shout-out, I was able to attend Montclair Elementary School's School of Excellence Event. Congratulations, Principal Parks and Assistant Principal Miller, thank you for having me. And Dr. Waltz, thank you for the budget and a lot of other things, even at the last minutes, putting in that pilot program for the community fields at the track. That's something, I know that Mr. Deutsch and I were working with a lot of the communities, trying to get some track usage. So all the way up to the end, it seemed, like I said, a very comprehensive budget, so thank you for that. And thank you all.
Outstanding. Thank you, everyone. This was an excellent year. The board members worked very hard to get work on the budget, so I want to thank every single board member. I may have forgotten to say, thank them during my comments when we passed the budget, but every single board member, thank you for everything you've done. I can't thank you enough. You know, many times you see what we do here, and you hear what we do here, and it's on video and in website, but there are a lot of things we still work on behind the scenes. And a couple of things that I've been working on, as far as, you know, the public asks me questions, and they grab me, whether it's at a soccer field or at a swim meet or wherever, is, you know, questions about grading. So I'm always looking to understand how we do the grading and how we're working to improve the way we do things so that we can help close the achievement gap and address those things, and I'll continue to work on those things. Things, you know, how we're working on with the AP programs and improving our curriculums there. I'm thrilled with the budget, Dr. Waltz, for expanding the spots in our governor's school, fully funding our special ed audit, all of these things, work towards student success, working on programs that the 46, 47 counselors or teachers, counselors that we hired. I've gotten an enormous number of thank yous from counselors who are, you know, very happy with this beginning, and I'm thrilled with it. As Mr. Deutsch said the other day, it's not too early to start working on next year's budget, so if you have ideas and concerns and thoughts, please come to us. I will continue to work as school board chairman of the 35th largest school system, the second largest in the Commonwealth, with our friends in Richmond, Governor Northam, with the General Assembly, to make sure we get another good budget next year. The investment in education, I can't tell you how important it is and the payoff it will have, and I'm thrilled with that. I want to also thank you, Dr. Waltz, for the track, allowing the community pilot program to use the track in evenings. That's exciting. Where I grew up, where we always used the track, and it was a great place for the community to gather and get together and work out together. So I am thrilled with this year's budget. I'm very proud of the work we did to do this. It doesn't end, and next year's budget is just beginning. Last, I will tell you that the Prince William County Regional Science Fair will be hosted right here on Saturday. Is that correct, Dr. Waltz? Saturday? And I think the public viewing time, I'm not sure, but I'm sure it's on the website. But I'd like to invite everyone to come see what our great middle school and high school students are doing, you know, and take a look at their great efforts. And these are the students who've won their local science fairs at their individual schools who will be presenting here. So thank you all. Have a wonderful evening and great night. Thanks.